It's gonna be great for us in the long run. We get here early to set up, make sure it's all productive when the kids show up, the parents show up, they're ready to rock and roll. We have goals, we have nets, we have everything we need to be successful, so the kids have a great training session every single night. I think they need to be passionate about what they do, right? If they're not in school, they're here, they need to be passionate, have a heart, be dedicated. You know, you can control your attitude and effort, I think that's what we tell our boys every day, and girls. You know, if you can control that, you're gonna have a great training session and come out here and always be coachable, we say. Be coachable, be ready to learn, and apply that to the training sessions in the game.
Eighteen Super Hornet pilot, and just being a great guy overall, but the air medal, wings, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Meritorious Unit Commendation, Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Navy and Marine Corps Overseas Service Ribbon, Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, National Defense Medal, Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, Navy Expert at the Pistol, did they shoot pistols in the Navy? I don't know. I don't know how that could happen in the Navy. The BB guns, okay, I'm just trying to figure that out. Navy, Navy Expert Pistol Shot Medal, Humanitarian Service Medal, Merchant Marine Expeditionary Medal, and, and again, he has served our country proudly and continues to serve our country as a Navy pilot again. So, we'd all rise, Pastor, if you could come up and do the invocation, we'd appreciate it, and then Lieutenant Commander DePaul will do the pledge afterwards.
All right, let's pray. Father God, we just thank you so much for this opportunity we have to gather here, and God, I thank you for just each person that's coming together in this meeting, and I pray that you would just bless this day, that you would bring clarity to all the topics discussed, and just all the celebrations and the proclamations and the things that will take place here as well. And I thank you for each of our commissioners and the professional staff and just everyone that comes together. Thank you for their unique set of skills, and I just ask that you would, again, bring clarity to this meeting and that we would do everything we can to keep Manatee County a great place to live. Thank you so much for your blessings to us and the grace you show us all the time. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for your service to our community and to our country. All right, moving along. County Administrator, do we have any updates to the agenda?
The agenda update memo has been added to the online agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, are there any items you would like to have pulled from consent? All right, thank you very much. So, moving along, we're gonna move to awards, and our first presentation is the presentation of the March Employee of the Month, Susan Montgomery from Transit. So, come on down, Transit guys.
As everyone gathers, meet Susan, she got trapped in the row. Chad Butzo from Public Works, we're gonna let Chris do a fair amount of our introduction. Hey, Susan.
Hi.
So, I'll transfer it over to Susan Supervisor, Christine.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. I'm just very happy to be here today to recognize Susan Montgomery for, I guess it's March Employee of the Month. She's invaluable to the organization, kind of the pulse of MCAT many times, that we just need information. I'm just so happy to be here and introduce Susan Montgomery.
Chris, a man of few words. You're good. The passion that I wanted to introduce from Susan would be an example that I got, I think it was in the last two weeks, of something where Susan was attempting to write her response of somebody that was desiring of service of where we don't go currently right now. And while it's a longer drawn-out effort to change the, where the limited dollars go and where we can add ridership, she was wanting me to immediately go to the board, and, well, it would help faster if you would just get the board to give us more money. And, thank you, Susan, I will reword that slightly, but Susan is very passionate at what she does. She's one of our key employees that keeps the routes and the times involved for setting the schedules at particular stops, and a lot of stops have crossing paths where she has to put that together. But she also cares about the riders. She's one that's out interviewing the operators out in the field, what allows them to stay on time, what allows them not to stay on time, talking to the actual riders themselves, what can we do better, what can we do to improve ourselves. She truly cares, and that's why she excels and is much, much deserving in this. If you've ever heard me say, anytime I've been here, Susan wants to do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do, and she's exemplary and much deserving for the Employee of the Month.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanna thank my team, because my team is amazing. Our team at Transit, we've been through a lot in Transit over the past couple of years, a lot of change, and the team that we have together now has really come together to support our bus operators and make public transit work for the people of Manatee County. So, another reason I'm getting this award is because I actually like what I do. I have my pin on it, says I'm a Transit nerd. I maintain a digital model of the Transit system that then runs all the technology that you see on our buses, our automatic passenger counter, our mobile app that you can see, the app our dispatchers use, the app we use to dispatch handy buses. So, I find that really exciting, and I really enjoy doing it, and I think that's what makes me good at my job. Finally, I just wanna talk about our bus operators, because my job is truly to support our bus operators, who are the meat and potatoes of our service. And those guys and girls are out there every day, they're social workers, they're police officers, they're safety managers, they're nurses, they're sanitation workers. They're doing all of that for $18.70 an hour. Please think of them often.
Thank you, ma'am. And that is a great example, selfless service, knowing she's part of a team and wants to, her main part of her job is to make the team go better. So, Susan, on part of Manatee County Board of County Commissioners, congratulations on being the March Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Chad.
We might take one more picture outside. Were you gonna?
Yeah, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge is on the board. Susan, don't go anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan, I just wanna thank you. You referenced that Transit has been through a lot, and it has, and it's one of our most vital departments or divisions within the county. It did go through a lot of change, and it's come out of that change, I think, in a really great way, and it's because of employees like yourself that, you know, sort of, sort of continued to man the wheel and guide us in the right direction through the rough water, and now Transit's in a great place. We're at a point where the Manatee County Transit System is free to all residents in this county. Ridership is up tremendously as a result. We're looking to add routes. We've already added, you know, at least increased the US 41 route to every 20 minutes now, and we're looking to add routes in other locations as well. So, Transit at this point is thriving. And just sure everyone in the room understands Transit is one of those divisions where the, you know, I know your support staff, but the majority of the employees in Transit are one of the faces of the county. They're the county employees who see our residents every single day. They also run mostly, for the most part, the same route every single day, and they tend to be one of the, some of the monitors of this county as well. When they see something is askew or something is off or wrong on that route, even if it's a passenger that they, you know, because we've had this, you know, in the last year or so, a passenger that stopped showing up, and they worried something was wrong, and they went, and there was something, there was something greatly wrong, without getting into detail. But our, they're sort of like monitors of our community to an extent. It's really not part of their job, but it's something that they just sort of take upon themselves to do. They're ambassadors for the community, and they're sort of watchers over the community as well. And when they're out there driving, I know that they do feel very on their own when they're out there, but they need the support of support staff like yourself to know that, you know, there is a whole group behind them that has their backs when they head out every single day. And so, I just wanted to thank you for that and make sure everyone understood the importance of your role at the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan, thank you so much for all you do at Transit. When I was out there last week, and there's not a lot of smiles at Transit, but yours was one of the biggest. So, thank you so much for everything you do for the county and what you do at Transit, and for the citizens of Manatee County, we appreciate you.
I forgot something, because I was so nervous. I have a one-minute and 45-second video that I'd like to show you. We made this last fall during the chaos, and it's just, it's very short.
Okay, yeah, we'll go and see it. Yeah, go ahead.
Welcome to Manatee County Area Transit. We move Manatee. Every month, MCAT buses travel more than 100,000 miles, providing local public transportation service to as many as 150,000 riders. MCAT delivers passengers to work, school, shopping, medical appointments, and recreational trips with bus routes and stops that are convenient to popular shopping areas. Students depend on MCAT to travel to and from high school, college, and other educational institutions.
It's really important to provide affordable and reliable transportation to our students, because sometimes they worry about being able to pay for things, and having a free, reliable bus available in their community makes it really helpful.
MCAT serves major areas of employment with stops close to major employers like Blake Hospital and many large shopping centers.
The impact of the bus service is absolutely crucial for us, because without it, our clients and some of our staff members who rely on MCAT would not be able to move through the community to their jobs, or our staff members wouldn't be able to get here, and we would absolutely be lost without the service provided by MCAT.
MCAT serves popular tourist destinations including Anna Maria Island, downtown Bradenton, and Longboat Key, with convenient stops for hospitality and restaurant staff.
What we especially love about MCAT is that there is a bus stop at every single one of our store locations in Manatee County. So, we've got plenty of shoppers coming, and our team members can get to work.
You can depend on MCAT to get you where you need to go. We move Manatee.
Thank you very much. It's a great video. And thank you to all of Transit for what you guys do, and thank you to the bus operators that drive every day. So, thank you guys very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And because of this board giving free fare for Transit and all those citizens that enjoy it, ridership's up 50% because of that.
Wow, that's great.
And you noticed out front this morning, we took a picture of another initiative the board directed us to do, and that is wrap some of our county vehicles. Do we have that video to show also?
Chad staring at you.
Okay, we have another video that shows later. Thank you.
I don't have it in my hand.
Thank you very much. All right, up next, we have some team award presentations, and Ms. Knapp, you're up.
Wow. We have a pretty large group, so if we can just give them a second.
Is anything in Developmental Services happening this morning? That is a big group.
Chambers will be empty when we're done.
Wow. Spud around.
We're good?
Yes, sports and leisure.
Where's Jenny's husband? Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services, and I'm pleased to be here this morning to share a great celebration, a team nomination for two wonderful ladies in our department, Ms. Brandy Wilkins and Jenny Ferentz. They work in our Bonds and Planning Divisions, and they were subject matter experts for a very long project that spanned over five years to create a new digital process for our bonds through the Acela system. And so, I'm actually gonna turn it over to their peers. There's nothing better than to receive a nomination, I argue, from your peers versus management. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Cameron Rice with our Business Services. He led the project, and then Denise Greer is gonna step in and also speak on behalf of the efficiencies that this project has created for Development Services.
Thank you, Nicole. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cameron Rice. As Nicole said, I was the project manager on this. So, nothing like public speaking to make you nervous, so I didn't want to over-prepare, so I'm gonna read what I wrote with the original nomination. But, "The Bonds Planning Team have been a vital component of the Acela Bond Project that spanned from approximately June 22 to October 23. They served as an irreplaceable subject matter expert throughout the life of the project and acted as liaisons to the Manatee County citizens." So, I just really wanted to thank you guys, because this was a big project for me, and without you guys, I would not have been able to do it. So, thank you, guys.
Denise Greer for staff. I just wanted to say a little bit more about what went into the process, because it's allowed us to eliminate probably 25 emails for each bond submittal that has, that we used to track everything by emails, by spreadsheets, and quite frankly, nobody just really knew where the process was in place unless you went to Brandy, and she pulled out all of her spreadsheets and all of her emails to get you the information. So, this is a plus for us. We are able to interact with other departments, such as Public Works Utilities, in a manner that everybody has the same information in front of them. It's taken the guesswork out of it, and hopefully, it's also helped the applicants get their bonds approved, submitted, and in place faster and more efficiently. And there's a few others that I would like to say thank you. Cameron spent many hours on this project, as well as Janice Haas in Development Review, and Larry, Larry Johnson, sorry, Larry Johnson in Development Review, who is also an integral part of the bond process that we go through for almost every project in some way that gets completed in the county, be it performance bonds or defect bonds for all the infrastructure that goes and gets built and taken over by Manatee County. So, I just wanted to say thank you to those three people, as well as Jenny and Brandy, who I've had the pleasure of working with. Thank you.
Thank you. I was pleasantly surprised, because I swear Cameron wanted to pull his hair out so many times when I went over the bond process, because it was a little bit more complex than he thought it was. But, I do wanna thank Jenny, because I know without her, I wouldn't have been able to go through this. And Jenny's gave a lot of input, and Larry, for his input, and also for Liz, she also helped, but definitely Cameron, because every week, we're going to Cameron, we're like, um, listen, hear me out. Can you, can you do this? Or, what about this idea? And he's, he always listens, he always gives us solutions, and he's very patient with us, and even he'll come with his own ideas. What do you guys think of this? And so, I really appreciate his help and everybody that had played a role in this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I only have a little bit to say, because it truly is a team award. It's not a single award, and I appreciate the whole team put their special talent to make this project successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to close, but I misspoke. I said a five-month project. It was like a 15-month project, and that sounds like a long time, but it's a lot of back and forth and testing different solutions to the problems. And at the end of that, they've saved, it's not articulated well here today, but they've saved a lot of time and money so that they can put their efforts on other work that really matters in the county. So, thank you to both you ladies and the whole team for helping create efficiencies in the Development Services for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, so much for all the hard work you do. Unsung heroes that we never get to see. So, oh, that's nice. Wow.
They're real. Yesterday, Courtney said to me, wow, those look really, they look real. I'm like, they are.
There you go. Thank you, ladies, again, and thank you Development Services for all the hard work you all do. We appreciate each and every one of you, but thank you so much. They're giving their plaque. There you go. All right. You are, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, you're on the board.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to very quickly state that, you know, we all live here, we all know how much building is going on in this county, and this is, this is a group of people who are as maxed out as any department in this county. So, if anybody needed some efficiency and some streamlining of their jobs, this would be the group. And I think those are the two adjectives that were, Nicole tapped on efficiency at the very end, but this is the board's direction to staff and you all following up on it, which I love, which is find ways to be more efficient, find ways to streamline things, because we're trying to create a more efficient government to serve our residents with. So, thank you so much.
Thank you again. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we'll wait for everybody clears out, is Molly here? Oh, there she is. Good morning, Molly. Do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. DeCarlo, Molly White, Sports and Leisure Services. I just wanna take a moment to acknowledge and recognize the team before you today. Unfortunately, Ms. Nancy couldn't join us, but the other three for the team award are here. And to the team behind me, not only do you all live the ACE principles, but you truly go above and beyond, or as I like to reference it as the extra inch, just doing a little more to really make someone's day. When it comes to recreation, we often laugh at the fact and reference that they made the show Parks and Recreation after our department, because you just don't quite know what you'll walk into each and every day. These employees before you today, time after time, have gone that extra inch to ensure our community is able to enjoy the recreational games that bring them out to our beautiful parks, enjoying each other in our facilities. In this department, we may all wear different hats, but we come together as the same team. The employees behind you today are top-notch leaders coming together time after time to problem-solve and never give up until the job is done. I'll pass it over to their direct reports to give you a little more information about the nomination.
Good morning. My name is Allison Minardi, Sports and Leisure Division Manager, and I just, I'm really excited to be here today to recognize, there's supposed to be four, but we've got three. We've got Brandon, we've got Bridget, and we've got Pat. Nancy couldn't be here today. This is our superstar weekend team. They open the facility at GT Bray on Saturdays. And if you guys know anything about the parks, you know they're really busy on Saturdays, and GT Bray, being the recreational hub of this county, is extremely busy. They've been throwing a lot of curveballs this past quarter, and that could look like anything from a crazy amount of events that we've been having at the parks. We've had tournaments, we've had pickleball tournaments, we've had opening day, we've had other organizations borrow. borrow our parking lots as the hub to shuttle them to other locations, just adding to the controlled chaos of GT Bray. But, this team has handled with excellence all of the customers' concerns and questions, and "Where do I go? Where do I need to be? What do I do? Want to get here?" And this is what they do day in and day out. They serve the community so they have the access to the recreation at the highest level of customer service that anyone could provide. I just wanted to really quickly share a story about how this particular team came together, because they're kind of an unlikely team to work hand-in-hand. Pat and Brandon work out in the fields, controlling what's going on in the activities in the parks, and then Bridget and Nancy are inside the recreation center. But, as you remember, we've had a lot of really strange weather this past winter, a lot more rain than we could have ever anticipated. And more times than, maybe two or three times, we've had, we've walked into the Walton Center being completely soaked. Those are pickleball courts, and if you've ever seen the pickleball fans, you know you don't want to get that phone call that the pickleball courts are closed. But, being that Nancy and Bridget are alone, there's a reasonable decision to just close the courts, but that wasn't good enough for them. So, they kind of set up the bat signal to Brandon and Pat, who came and answered that call to help. And I'm going to also note that when you dry courts, we only have a hand squeegees right now. We need to work on that, but it is 20 courts that they labor-intensive hand-dried in record time so that Bridget and Nancy could notify some of the people that would have to move their reservations later in the day. But, they didn't just rely on Mother Nature and the sun to dry the courts. They took it upon themselves, not once, but twice this past winter. And just because of the care and diligence they put into their job, it sounds simple, but doing it with such high integrity and dedication is why we wanted to honor them today. You know, we get a lot of compliments on them, you know, Bridget, Nancy, their smiles when you walk into the fitness center, their knowledgeable. Pat and Brandon, they're so helpful to the leagues, and they really appreciate their presence at the parks. So, we know that they're recognized by the community, but we wanted to take this opportunity to let them know from a management standpoint how much we appreciate them and are so thrilled to have them on our team.
Thank you.
Good morning. Michelle Richardson, Sports and Leisure Services Department, and I have the pleasure of having two of these employees on my team. Bridget, who is also an almost 34-year employee with the county, so lots of tenure in. Before too long, hopefully not too soon, we'll be here recognizing her on a retirement award. That'll be a Saturday. And Nancy, who is on vacation in Chicago, is a part-time employee of ours, who has been with the department for just a little bit over two years now. So, just to reiterate what Allison said, the collaboration between the four individuals here is pretty remarkable. Saturdays at GT Bray Park is very busy, and these guys are at the forefront of just kind of keeping the show running with a limited number of resources. So, thank you for recognizing them today, and thank you all for your hard work and dedication and commitment to success. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Morning. Marcus Francis, Sports and Leisure Services. I oversee the other two, and Pat and Brandon, like Allison said, they do a great, great job. They are your West Park Attendant Team. That with Emily, they oversee Palmasola Park and GT Bray, and it is, it gets busy. We talk about the bat signal. I wouldn't be surprised if these two didn't come in costume next time, because they really, really look forward to helping out any which way they can. That's why we call them park attendants, tending to the park, the users, the park, the needs, anything that is needed, they tend to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comment?
I'm Patrick Hussey. I'm humbled. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Love that.
Hi, I'm Bridget Dalby, and I just want to say thank you. And I really want to thank these guys because they always come to our rescue when we need help, all of the park attendants do.
Thank you. Thank you for 34 years.
Morning. I want to say thank you to my team. I couldn't do anything without them, honestly. Pat is definitely our wingman. He loves to work, tell you that. So, he keeps us all humble and ready to go for the next day. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Give them their plaques. You want to go, I want to give out the plaques. Commissioner Van Austinbridge.
Thank you, sir. So, I know virtually everyone on this team, some of you for 20-plus years. Went to high school with Marcus. And we have a fantastic team at GT Bray. I live like a mile from Bray. I'm there almost every day. I mean, our park attendants certainly know my truck when they see it. It's usually the one with the dogs hanging out the back windows. But, the greatest, I mean, you all have done such an amazing job at Bray. I've been going there my entire life, spent half my childhood at Bray, and the place is thriving more now than I think it ever has been. If you go through there on a Saturday, our greatest, this board's greatest challenge at Bray right now is parking, which challenges us with that always, because that means that, you know, obviously, people are utilizing the park. Little League Baseball is off and running right now, softball's thriving, Wildcats, Racket, I mean, again, parking, right, is the biggest problem we have over there. And of course, soccer's going strong right now, too. I've never seen the park thrive the way it is right now. So, my challenge with you is to try and uphold greatness out there at GT Bray and keep it going for as long as we can. And the board is here to support you any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those comments. Thank you all. Molly, thank you for everything you and your team does. Our parks are always looking great. Everything's running smoothly, so you've got a great team. And these guys are showing that you do have a great team. So, thank you very much. All right. Coming up next, we're going to do a presentation on a Community and Veteran Services Handy Bus Wrap. So, do we have a video for that, sir?
Gonna ruin the surprise. So, again, the board gave us initiative to start wrapping our vehicles, to showcase what we have here in the county, and an example of that's out front right now. So, with that said, can we cue it up? Cue?
Cue, cue it up.
Got sound?
Well, this is not fun.
I think you're busted.
I hit your meat. Yeah. There you go.
Can you put closed captions on them? You'll see Charles Cook in the video.
There he is.
Yeah, that's Casey Zimple and the crews from our information outreach. They always do such a fantastic job, so thank you so much. Sarah Brown had a large part to do with this. Sarah?
Good morning, Commissioner Sarah Brown, Deputy Director for Community and Veteran Services. We're super excited to showcase this today. I mean, what great real estate thanks to Transit, to be able to showcase the great services that we're offering to our veteran services, and we're not going to stop here. This is just one stop. But, this was a collaborative effort between Community and Veteran Services, Transit, the Communications Department, Fleet, everyone worked together and at record speed. Charlie told us to go. We went and made it happen. So, if you haven't checked it out, go check it out in front. It looks awesome, and you'll see many more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. How many are we going to actually wrap for Veteran Services?
Kevin?
Come on up, Kevin.
We're planning to wrap all of our power transit vehicles. So, we've got two that are wrapped right now, and two more that are going to be wrapped, I think, the first week of April. The same, yes.
And we discussed the bus that goes to Bay Pines about wrapping that bus also?
Correct. So, after all the power transit vehicles, we're looking to wrap, I think, maybe four or five fixed route buses, just in case, you know, ones in maintenance, getting repaired. So, the ones going over to the VA in Pinellas County are also representing us.
And as a reminder, the board directed us to look at the On Demand. Do you want to talk about that and how that's progressing?
We're working it now. So, I think a couple more weeks, we'll have something to talk about. But, yeah, we're looking into a whole bunch of different things with veteran On Demand, and On Demand, and just a bunch of little things. So, we're working with Cutter right now, as we speak. So, we're just, we're, we work with Cutter because we, Pinellas County actually launched something similar, so we're looking to kind of not do the mistakes that they made. So, we're going to do this very carefully and have every dot, you know?
So, On Demand will allow a veteran to call or, on an app, or call in and set an appointment, and the Handy Bus will go get them and take them to their appointments, and that's what specifically this is for.
Correct. We're looking at everything. So, and I don't want to say too much, but it would be app-based, you know, round trip to and from. And we're just, we're looking into how we do this, if it could be utilized with some grant opportunities and some other stuff. So, we're really diving into this very deep, but you'll hear something very shortly.
Okay. Commissioner Bearden.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is amazing. I love the wrap. You know, I told the Veterans Service Department that they better get ready because they're going to be getting a lot of calls, especially when we start marketing. But, this is the beginning of something that's going to be amazing for our veteran community, or 40,000 member veteran community out, and it's going to continue to increase as far as the services that are going to be provided through our veteran services. And so, with us linking up that nonprofit veteran organization with Manatee County Government, it's going to be able to really flourish in the services that are going to be offered to our veterans that never knew, you know, in the past, what was offered to them. So, this is just that beginning of us getting that word out there to say, "Hey, you guys have different benefits that are offered to you, and there's other organizations that you may not get a benefit from, but offer certain things that you can get those services from." And this is just the beginning. And I just really appreciate all the hard work and the dedication that you and your team have put together to put all this together. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate our veteran services, so thank you for all the work you're doing. Thank you Transit for jumping on that and getting it done so fast. We appreciate all the hard work. Thank you very much. All right. Coming up next is our proclamations, and what I'd like to do is to get a motion to approve all of our proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
All right. That's been moved by Commissioner Satcher, second by Commissioner Ballard. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unposed, none, and thank you very much. What I'm going to do right now, I'm going to hand the gavel over to Commissioner Ballard, and I'm going to come down and read the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
Feel the power going to my head already.
Actually, I want Commissioner Ballard to do this, but she's a little immobile, for various reasons. Well, this is a great proclamation for us to be able to present this week, or for this month, for the month. You know, child abuse is a horrific thing that happens to our kids out there, and it's, it needs to stop, and we need to do anything we can to stop child abuse. But, what I'd like to do is move forward and read the proclamation, and then we'll go from there. "Whereas, Florida's future prosperity depends on our next generation. It is imperative that we do everything we can to nurture the healthy development of over 4 million children living, growing, and learning in our diverse communities. And whereas, child abuse is a crime that affects 5,301 children each year in Manatee County with a rate of 60.3 reports per 10,000 in comparison to 51.1 per 10,000 statewide. Whereas, child abuse and neglect can cause severe costly and lifelong problems amongst society as a social, criminal, academic difficulties, and emotional and physical, along with mental health challenges. And whereas, individuals, businesses, schools, and communities, and faith-based organizations must make children a top priority and take action to support the emotional, social, physical, academic, and mental development and well-being of all children. And whereas, Pennwheels for Prevention, along with the Manatee Children's Services Department of Children and Family Services, the Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Safe Children's Coalition, and other agencies work to prevent child abuse by promoting thriving families and healthy child development. Now, therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 24th shall be known and designated and set aside as Child Abuse Prevention Month here in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 12th day of March 2024, and signed by myself, Mike Ron Chairman. Thank you very much for being here today, and thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here, along with my colleagues. Just a pleasure to work with them. My name is Terry Smith. I am a parenting specialist for Manatee Children's Services, which means that I teach parenting classes, and I am so proud to be a part of Manatee Children's Services. MCS is a child advocacy center with the mission to advocate for and provide the resources, skills, and shelter to alleviate abuse through prevention and intervention for all children and families. Since 1977, our agency has been dedicated to breaking the cycle of abuse for over 12,000 children and families in Manatee County each year. Our programs change lives through immediate and long-term shelter, mental health services, intervention to detect abuse, and ongoing support for families to help prevent abuse. As the only child advocacy center in Manatee County, Manatee Children's Services also functions as the county's only emergency shelter respite for abused foster children. On behalf of Manatee Children's Services, we appreciate your recognition, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And if I could just briefly, thank you so much to MCS for everything that you all do on a regular basis to make sure that our children who are in those crisis situations are immediately protected, for the diversion services that you provide to families to help hold things together, as well as for the reunification services that you provide. And just so that everybody is aware, if there's anything that's going on, you suspect child abuse, the abuse hotline number is 1-800-962-2873. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all. You do perform great work. Thank you so much. All right. Up next is Commissioner Van Austinbridge. National Surveyors and Mappers Week. You were anxious today. All right. Surveyors, come on down, and mappers.
Don't forget the mappers.
We won't forget the mappers.
Surveyors and mappers.
We'd get lost without the mappers.
So, I like to do, I like to do this one every year. I spend a day working with the surveyors and mappers over in my district. It was a lot of fun. Very proud group. They informed me that their profession is the second oldest profession in the world. Then later, I found out what the oldest profession was. So, interesting. But, interesting, they all know the history of surveying as well. They talked to me about founding father, you know, George Washington, all these different people that were surveyors, a lot of Masons are surveyors. Anyway, it's a really interesting profession, so I always enjoy reading their proclamation. All right. "Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, whereas surveyors and mappers are counted among the founding leaders of our country and were instrumental in the formation of property boundaries which support the enjoyment of property ownership. And whereas, we recognize the valuable contributions of the surveying and mapping profession to history, development, and quality of life in Florida and nationwide, and make important decisions based on knowledge, expertise of licensed surveyors and mappers. And whereas, the surveying and mapping profession requires special education, training, the knowledge of mathematics," you would be out, Commissioner Ron.
Yes.
"...the related physical and applied sciences and requirements of law for evidence. And whereas, surveyors and mappers are uniquely qualified and licensed to determine and describe land and water boundaries for the management of natural resources and protection of private and public property rights. And whereas, the continual advancements and instrumentation have required the surveyor and mapper not only to understand and implement methods of the past, but also to learn and employ modern technology in finding solutions but also to learn and employ modern technology in finding solutions to meet the challenges of the future. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that March seventeen through twenty three, two thousand and twenty four, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Surveyors and Mappers Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this twelfth day of March two thousand and twenty four and signed by Michael Ron, Chairman of the Manatee County Commission. Who do we have here today? Here you are, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'll lift this up for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us this morning and and our acknowledgement of the profession. On behalf of my staff, the county staff as well, we have guests that are in the survey discipline. Thank you very much for this proclamation and recognition. It's a lot of work done on in the county with surveying. People don't realize, but we do a good, we got a great staff. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And he's right. It's not, I mean, they're they're standing in the middle of the road with, you know, people whizzing, like Commissioner Turner whizzing by them, you know, fast. And 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 when I was out there helping, they said, you know, they're, what are we trying to find? We're trying to find these markers that are in the ground. I said, okay. And then sudden, after we'd found five or six, they said, well, why don't you reach down and find that one? And I was like, oh, okay. And they said, right there. And of course, there was a massive amp pile, you know, the marker was in the middle of that one. And but it was kind of them to let me participate. I appreciate that. But but they are out there. They're in the elements every day. The traffic is whizzing by them every day. I'm sure when they're out in Duette and other places, they get to spot some fun wildlife as well. So it's it's not an easy job. It's not just math by any means. So we appreciate what they do for us every single day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, for keeping us straight. Keeping us in bounds. Next up is Public Works Week, and Commissioner Cruz is presenting. Public Works.
Turn's gonna be empty by the time we're done.
Come on down.
They're the newest guy.
These guys.
All right. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Manatee County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, and who are responsible for rebuilding and improving Manatee County. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Manatee County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now, be it therefore proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April eighth through twelfth, two thousand twenty four, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Public Works Week in Manatee County. It's adopted with a quorum present this twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty four, and signed by our chairman, Michael Ron. And I mean, nothing we do in Manatee County, no place you go in Manatee County isn't touched by and and facilitated by Public Works. I know sometimes they may catch a little heat because the roads congested or a sidewalk, but this group can only do it. We provide the the funding for them to do, and I can assure you, they 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 make the most of every dollar they're provided. They look for the best opportunities in Manatee County. I reached out, was it the fall, about a an intersection that was causing problems for some residents. They jumped on it. They looked at it, and they came up with a solution, and now all the residents were happy about it. They're 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 quick on their feet. They're looking out for the best interest of Manatee County to get us places safely and quickly to the the best of their ability. We couldn't do without them. It's it's one of the best, if not the best, public works teams in the state of Florida, and I appreciate Chad and his whole team. So this week's for you.
Thank you, sir.
Today, we get to celebrate the word public works, not necessarily the department public work. So that's the first point I want to make sure everybody understands. I really celebrate this day because it really focuses on the idea of the people that work for a living across as many departments the way the county is structured. It's our utilities department, property management, park maintenance, because everything that typically the people think of when they move up north, from up north down here, from a smaller type of town, public works is all encompassing, but it includes the sidewalk repairs. It includes the sewer mains. It includes the water mains. Some days, it some places includes trash pickup. Also includes the building and facilities maintenance, air conditioning in Florida, snow removal up north. But it's all about that. I try to instill across all these guys, you are learning a trade, a trade that is transportable. It's necessary no matter what community you go to across the United States. You have experience that's relevant and experienced and a transportable skill that hopefully will help you get a job anywhere else. It is not that lackluster job of, ooh, life didn't turn out. I'm working for the county. No, it's a career, and it's something that you should be proud of, taking care of your own community. Many, many of our employees live and work and actually are born and raised here in Manatee County. Many of us are transplants, including me. Please don't hate them. And but we, the ones that do grow up here, they have that extra pride in what they deal. And I just definitely, everyone that deals with in the trench, dealing with pipes and why is the storm pipe leaking with the critter that you might meet face to face when you take a peek down the manhole? Or, golly, what's that smell? Everybody that is out in August doing sidewalk repairs, the fleet maintenance that keeps the equipment going year round, the guys that are making the water, clean water to drain and brush your teeth, the folks that are keeping the signs up and in the correct spot, the traffic signals working. They only work so much. You can only get so many cars through so many lanes at rush hours. So but we also have the utilities treating the sewer, keeping our environment clean and safe. Utilities coordinating trash being picked up on a cyclical basis and keeping the community spotless. So I wanted to recognize that and really invite you all out. Selfless promotion. We chose the week of dedication in April. Public Works Open House and Touch a Truck, Saturday, April thirteenth, nine to noon at the Public Works Campus, Saturday, nine to noon, April thirteenth, Public Works Campus, ten twenty-two, Twenty-sixth Avenue East.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you. Thank you to all of Public Works. You your team performs an amazing job as busy as they are all day long, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So we appreciate all the work you guys do, and we appreciate each and one of you, and thank you for being here in Manatee County. Thank you so much. All right. Up next, we're getting through our we're getting through our proclamations. Up next is Water Conservation Month, and Commissioner Turner is presenting that.
Good morning. You know, standing in front of the chair, I just realized how dapper he looks today. Look at that. You're a handsome man. Anyways.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here to do the proclamation for Water Conservation Month. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, creature being a reference to me more so than you guys. Whereas the state of Florida, water management districts, and Manatee County are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas Manatee County and the state of Florida have designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they are, they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Manatee County has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, that April two thousand twenty four shall be known, designated, and set aside as Water Conservation Month. In Manatee County, Florida, Florida is calling upon each and every citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty four, and signed by our chairman, Michael Ron. Who's up next?
We want to thank you all for recognizing the importance of water conservation and supporting our education and outreach programs. We do have a display out front, so I encourage everybody to stop by and see what information might be relevant for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, along with that, we have information for all of our rebate programs, so citizens can save money inside their house and outside their house if they implement water-saving initiatives. Also, to jump on the the wraps, coming soon, water conservation wrapped vans will be out in the community. We have two vans that are out every single day taking water samples that work with our water quality laboratory. We're going to wrap those with a water conservation message. One is at the shop right now. There'll be artwork from last year's contest for our Drop Savers posters, along with water conserving tips and a QR code to link you to those rebate programs. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for all you do. We appreciate it. Water conservation is huge in Manatee County, so thank you. All right, next up is Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist Church Day, and Commissioner Satcher is going to present that for us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation today, whereas well over a hundred years ago, a small group of God-fearing believers, led by the Spirit of God, organized and established the Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist Church, presently located on Erie Road in Parish, making it the oldest African-American church in Manatee County. And whereas each year on the third Sunday in March, Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist Church commemorates its church anniversary and remains committed to honoring the extraordinary legacy of its history. And whereas on this commemoration of its one hundred and forty-seventh anniversary, Saint Mary's Baptist Church remains as committed today as it was long ago to continue nurturing the faith of its members and to share the gospel message to our surrounding communities. And whereas, under the leadership of the Holy Spirit, Reverend Ricky Stevens was recently chosen to carry the torch and was installed as pastor in January, two thousand twenty four, following the death of Reverend Dr. Fletcher Lawson, Jr., who was a prominent citizen of Manatee County. And whereas, as we celebrate this milestone, we pause and give thanks, honor, and praise for the deep and abiding Christian commitment of those who in faith began this work, and for all those from all over Manatee County who have given so unselfishly during these many years, to see that the work of the church continues to grow and thrive. And whereas, Saint Mary's has undergone many transformations over the past one hundred and forty-seven years, but it is evident that the original God still dwells there amongst his people. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that March seventeenth, two thousand twenty four, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist Church Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty four, and signed by our chairman, Mike Ron.
Thank you, Commissioner Satcher, and thank you all of you Commissioners for recognizing Saint Mary Missionary Baptist Church out in Parish, Florida. And I do want to say Parish because there's another Saint Mary Missionary Baptist Church here in Bradenton. I don't want Pastor Jackson to be stealing our thunder, but we do thank you for this award and this recognition as the oldest black church here in Manatee County. And we we are grateful for this recognition. We look forward to the continued work in this community as we move forward with a lot of things going on in in the area right now with the Erie Road project that we will we will look into work diligently with the county to make sure that every all our services and all our needs are will be met, and we'll be continue to be able to serve the peoples of Parish and Manatee County in a special way. And we thank God for this opportunity to stand before you today. Thank you, Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate all the work you guys do out there. Thank you so much. Are any of the original members still around?
Maybe.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Thank real out. It's a pleasure to be able to do this proclamation for you all. Thank you so much. All right, up next, last proclamation is Government Finance Professionals Week, and Commissioner Bearden's gonna do that. Oh, my Lord.
Managing all our money. That's how many people it takes to manage our money in Manatee County.
Is there anybody managing the money right now?
Awesome. Well, we all know how important our financial department is to Manatee County, and it's just an honor to sit up here and and give this proclamation today. So whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, or FGFOA, is a professional association founded in nineteen thirty-seven and serves over thirty-three hundred professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, and colleges and universities. And whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being a professional resource for finance officers by providing opportunities for education, networking, and leadership. And whereas this Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and its member governmental organization, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services they provide to our state, our county, and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that the week of March eighteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand twenty four, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Government Finance Professionals Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty four, signed by our chair, Commissioner Mike Ron.
Thank you, sir. Sheila.
Good morning, Commissioners. I really want to thank you for honoring and appreciating the hard work that all my one hundred and fifteen fiscal and financial mem- financial officers that work for the county do for the county.
Are they all here this morning right now?
No. They're they're doing work that matters, the other ones.
The other ones.
I do need to, yes, these are the folks that manage your money, your two two billion-dollar budget, and they do it with pride and dedication. It takes it takes a whole village to make this county work, and it's not easy. Everybody has their expertise in certain fields. Our professional finance expertise we do every day. We love it. We live it, and we give it to the county with every breath we take. We are not the only ones, and I do want to say this, we're not the only ones that make it all work. And I do, when I say that, I want to include the folks, the finance officers that work for other entities that are associated with the counties such as the port, the clerk, the sheriff, the property appraiser, the tax collector, and other judicial programs which also administrate the the finances of some of the aspects of the county. Thank you so much for all your hard work and all your dedication. Also, I want to appreciate and recognize those folks that work also in finance in the corresponding cities of the county. They also do work that matters. Thank you so much. Thank you all my staff for all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. You guys get back to work. Balance the budget. Let's go. Thank you all very much. Your work is so important to the county, and I know we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to the budget season starting here very shortly, so looking forward to working through that. All right.
Was on the board.
We'll let everybody let them exit before we go to Oh, Ray's on the board? Sorry. Ray.
That's a bit late now. That's right.
Ray's on the board? Oh, sorry, Commissioner. Yeah. He doesn't care. All right. We'll wait for the crowd to exit.
All right, we'll wait for the crowd to exit quietly, please. Thank you, we're still in the meeting. I didn't know the finance people were that loud. Yeah, they don't get out much. All right, coming up next is we'll have our citizen comment. This is citizen comment for future agenda items only. Anything that's on today's agenda will not be discussed in this section. You'll have time when that item comes up. This is for a total of 30 minutes, and each person has three minutes to speak. We have some folks on the speaker list, so first up is Pat Simmons. Good morning, ma'am, how are you? If you would, when you come up, please state your name and your county of residence. Thank you very much. Ma'am, you know the rules.
Pat Simmons, Manatee County. It's, I think that you were talking about bus stops and sidewalks today, because that's what I want to talk about. I honestly don't know where the county ends and the city starts on 41 heading north. But I was driving the other day, and today as well, and I've seen people in wheelchairs on the street because they can't manipulate the sidewalks on 41, say, from 30th North. There's sidewalks, but then there's giant light poles right in the middle of the sidewalks, and there's no way a person in a wheelchair or a walker could use that sidewalk. And they don't even have access sometimes to the bus stops for the same reason. So if you're driving that stretch road, I just ask that you please be cognizant of what you see, the sidewalks on both sides. The sidewalks are extremely narrow as it is. They're old, probably hundreds of years old, I don't know, but they're not accessible. So just take a look at that. Also, I wanted to talk about the park, the new park out in Lakewood Ranch. I was looking at the drawing for the playground, and there's a ramp for a wheelchair that dead ends at steps, and it doesn't look like there's any room for that wheelchair to turn around. And what is that going up the ramp to do? There's nothing for the people in wheelchairs once they get up that ramp. There's nothing for them to do. So that would have been a good reason to have a citizen's advisory board.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Mary Lynn Parker.
I'm here to talk about Emerson Point. It is on your agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's there as an update or a report, so I'm not sure if a motion will be made that will allow public comment at that time. If you could clarify, then I will wait.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. It's coming up as an agenda item, so...
And there will be public comment during that item.
Yes, ma'am, if there's a motion, there will be, yes, ma'am.
But if there's no motion, there will be no public comment, is that correct?
If there's no action, there's no need for public comment.
Then I'd like to make my public comment now.
Well, ma'am, it's an agenda item today, and there...
It is an agenda item, sir, but there is no opportunity for public comment.
Ma'am, we need you to wait till, at that point, when the agenda item comes up. Thank you very much.
So if there is no action, there will be no public comment, is that correct?
That is correct. If there's no... You're asking her to speak on an agenda item that's on today's agenda, and if, at that time, we'll have to see what happens at that time, but if there's no action taken, there's no public comment. And that's correct, county attorney?
So that forbids me from making a public comment now, when there's no guarantee there would be public comment later.
Ma'am, there's... Hang on, hang on. There is... What we're asking to speak now is future agenda items. The Emerson Point piece is on today's agenda. So at that point, we will find out what happens at that time. If you make public... I'm not going to allow public comment on an agenda item today unless that agenda item comes up, so...
And your attorney agrees with that?
Mr. Chairman, what you stated is correct. If there's going to be a motion and action by the board today, then they'll be allowed permission for public comment with regard to that, sir.
I'm sure there'll be some type of motion at that point, whatever it's for. I'm sure there'll be some type of motion, either to direct staff or whatever, at that point, to do that. So I'd ask that you hold your comments till then, ma'am.
I will gladly do that with an opportunity later. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Thank you. Abby, Sun Coast Water Keepers, Abby...
This is the same thing.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you. Now, anybody else that would like to come up for public comment, please come up and state your name, and you have three minutes. State your name and county of residence, and this is for future agenda items only.
Yes, Carol Phelps, Maiaaca, regarding future agenda items. One of the things that we're just going to come up here and repeat under future agenda items is, where are we keeping track of what citizens are coming up here and asking to be put on a future agenda? We have a list, in case you haven't been keeping track, but we do have a list. And I did want to say that it was really nice to have a great crowd in here, and the majority of those, of course, were people that were here for proclamations and for commendations of our county staff. And I would especially like to thank our financial staff as they presented a wonderful opportunity for us on the LMAC to actually look at our budget and how that money works. But we've got other things on our future agenda comments list that we're up here to ask that these things are on future agendas. We've been having meetings that have been running anywhere from two to four hours, which seems to lend us a lot of time to address future agenda items. We've canceled work sessions that would give us time to address future agenda items. And let's recap some of those that we have brought up. I'll wait, Mr. Bearden.
I'm looking at you in the screen right here.
We have TVs up here.
I know.
Okay.
Eyes, help. So, future agenda items. We've asked for public comment to be brought back. We'd like to have a work session on that, because I agree, it can be a difficult thing, but we've asked for that. We'd like to see a work session on that. You'll note that I'm a little bleary-eyed today. That's not from getting up early. That's because of all the clear-cutting that we're having out there in a combination with our natural pollen season, et cetera, but we've asked to look into the clear-cutting. And right now, I've asked many of you who may have attended the chili cook-off in Parish this week to take a ride down 675, where it looks like a war zone. We've just asked for some attention to these issues. That's how this is supposed to work. Citizens' comments. Bless you, that's what happens. So we have citizens' comments we want to see on the agenda. We would like to address the clear-cutting issues. We were promised an audit and review of our citizens' advisory committees. We'd like to see that. We'd also like to have some input on our citizens' academy, which is supposed to be presented in August. Our understanding is that it has been prepared, but we have not seen any citizens' input. And just like explaining things, as Mr. Ron said, are we going to have public comment on something? Well, we have to have a motion to allow that. So we need to understand those things so we can be effective citizens up here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person. State your name and county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Peterson, and I'm a Manatee County resident. I'm here to address several important matters that are of great concern to me, as well as advocate for the well-being of our community, particularly housing initiatives and the alarming suicide rates among women veterans. Firstly, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Mike Ron for meeting with me last week. His explanation of the workforce housing initiatives in Manatee County was enlightening. I appreciate the dedication and effort being invested in addressing the critical issue of affordable housing within our community. Moving on to a matter of great urgency, this report just came across my awareness in the last three days. This is from the DAV, Disabled American Veterans. This 2024 report reveals an alarming increase, 24.1% in the suicide rate among women veterans between the years of 2020 and 2021, 24.1% increase. That rate is nearly four times higher than the 6.3% increase among male veterans and significantly higher than the 2.6% increase among non-veteran women. As a woman veteran and single mother who personally experienced struggles, including homelessness, in January 21, I checked myself into the Manatee County Shelter Salvation Army, and I witnessed firsthand the barriers in access to services and care as a woman veteran. I'm deeply concerned about the unique challenges faced by women veterans, such as military sexual trauma, intimate partner violence, pregnancy postpartum. I urge the Manatee Board of County Commissioners to address this crisis by implementing targeted outreach programs for women veterans, including homeless prevention services, transitional supportive housing, permanent supportive housing, and increase the socialization of women veterans. The report highlights significant gaps in the care of women veterans and suggests communities should take proactive measures to provide the necessary support. I left it in the note, but I'm not going to get into it. The only thing I'm going to comment about the park, the memorial park, is I suggest, Commissioner Bearden, you consider a memorial for the 22 at the park to honor those who died by their own hands back home, and please put it in a very prominent position where everyone can see coming and entering the park. I want to emphasize that the urgent matter of women veterans' suicide takes precedence over this discussion. As a subject matter expert on women veterans of reproductive age, combat veterans, and military sexual trauma survivor, I'm committed to sharing my life experiences to contribute to meaningful solutions. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to the well-being of our community. I am hopeful that together we can address these issues and create a positive change for the residents of Manatee County.
Stephanie, can you do me a favor? Can you get with Lee DiPaolo, our Director of Community and Veteran Services, on this issue with the suicide rate of women veterans, so they can start addressing that? Would that be correct, Mr. Administrator?
That person in the room?
No, he's not. Actually, looking for either him or Andy, but yes, we'll follow up.
We'll make sure they get...
All right, thank you, and I'm going to email you the 50-page report, as well as the fact sheet from the DAV, so thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Glenn Gibley in Manatee County. I sent you this last night. Of course, I didn't get a response, I never do. This favoritism, this favoritism with developers and bypassing the policies is not the way to go. I think Nicole is a good person. I think she was pressured by the administration and this developer backboard to make these changes.
Hey, Glenn, this is going to be a future agenda item.
This is a future, our policy.
Well, it will be. We've asked Ms. Knapp to address it, and she's going to come forward with a future agenda item on this. So, I mean, so...
Love to hear that.
So, yeah, we are going to address that.
Are we making a motion on what Nicole is going to be presenting to us?
I'd like to reclaim my time.
I don't think you're making action, but we had discussed this in... When this came up last time, we discussed about coming up and her researching and bringing something forward.
But it's not on the agenda.
No, but it will be at some point.
Isn't that literally what this 30 minutes is for? Is discussing future agenda items?
All right.
You gotta stop my clock. I am not... I want to reclaim my time. You keep it running, and I'm not...
I'm just saying, we're going to try to work through this issue. I mean, it was an issue that was missed by... In planning commission, it was an issue missed by the staff at that time, and I sat on the planning commission. I worked on the ADUs as a planning commissioner and as vice chair of the planning commission, and I feel that it was an error in this process regarding ADUs, how to address ADUs on large-scale with large-scale property owners and that type of stuff. So, I mean, we can do whatever, but if you want to figure it out, go ahead, talk about it.
Nope, I've said all I got to say. I think Nicole's a good person. I think she was pressured in to do things that she didn't want to do. But more importantly, I am back here about the veterans again. EML defunds the police, you guys defund the veterans. So I reserve the rest of my time for the commissioners to rebuttal. Commissioner Ballard, why did you defund the last $1.5 million earmarked for our homeless veterans? Commissioner Ron, why did you vote for defending, defunding the $1.5 million for our veterans? And Commissioner Bearden, why did you vote to defund the $1 million for homeless veterans? You could have easily taken 1.7 of the overpayment of the $4 million you voted to redirect fluff funds, more than you needed for that, for that. Could have easily solved our veterans' problems. And Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, you've been there the longest, you've never supported the veterans based on your town hall meetings as a homeless camp, so I would like some clarity to this. So I'm going to reserve the rest of my time to explain, not only to me, but more importantly, to the homeless veterans that are out there. Four months ago, to the day you defunded the veterans, and you've not replaced one thin dime of those funds for immediate transitional housing for our veterans, yesterday, tomorrow, tonight, they have no funds to go anywhere because you defunded them. So I will be prepared to listen to your logic of why you did that and why it hasn't been corrected. Oh, the handy bus is great. I think it's a great idea. Make sure you can ping the phones when those homeless vets are living under a bridge, that bus can pick them there for their doctor's appointment, right? It's unbelievable that we have not moved any forward.
Thank you, sir.
I've got 33 seconds, because you guys chat it. So I'm going to reserve the 33 seconds for an answer, if anybody would like to address it.
Mr. Chairman, this is not the time for dialogue with... This is future comments, and this is comments for future agenda items, and as long as the citizens have been given an opportunity to address those with the board, you can move on to the next speaker.
That's simply not correct, because they have citizen comments. The commission does speak on them after we leave. They talk about future agenda items that we can't. So you're incorrect, so don't give them bad information.
Thank you, Mr. Gibley, we appreciate your comments.
Nobody?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Good morning. You know the rules.
Manatee County, I'm Andrea Griffin, Manatee County activist, advocate, whatever you'd like to call. So I'm going to kind of dovetail on a little bit of what they said, but mine's more in line with the fact that we're not bringing or doing anything to encourage residents to get involved with our community. We're blocking, we're making it uncomfortable here in the dais by making sure we can't, even though we're here for hours on end, we can't bring drinks in here. We're not able to utilize phones to call in when we're unable to make it, to have our voices heard. A lot of you guys ran on our voice, ran on First Amendment, ran on us being proactive in our communities and in our county meetings and things of that nature, but everything that's being put in place since I haven't been here for a while and starting to come back, a lot of the stuff that we worked to put in place are all removed, are all removed from this, making it more uncomfortable for residents to come here and speak up, making it more uncomfortable for them to stay for a duration, making it uncomfortable when they can't stay here for the duration, they can't even call in. So I'm really having some frustration over that. This is something I've brought up to this board many times. Some of you guys are on board with the call, some of you guys are not, but this is starting to get a little ridiculous, in my opinion. So I think it is to, this would be a strategy I would use to make people uncomfortable from coming to meetings. So that's what I'm looking at it as. And then we've got the buses, and I just say, you know, I'm really happy with the And I just say, you know, I'm really happy with the buses, them being free. I've had a situation that occurred, thank you, Glenn, for bringing me here, but I had a look at a bus schedule, okay, because my car is in the shop and I was going to be here rain or shine, one way or another, for this meeting. And so, I decided, well, you know what? We have free buses. Why not utilize them? But I've never used a bus before, so I have no idea what our routes are, I have no idea where to pick up. So, I went to Manatee County website, I went to the area for the transit. I even downloaded that little download thing. I couldn't figure out what bus I needed to get on, where it was going to go, or how to even get to this meeting. So, that's me not, you know, and I tried to read as much as I could. So, I think somebody needs to look at that again because people that have never utilized this stuff, it's very difficult to utilize. I will tell you, after an hour and a half, I did realize I needed to be on Bus 8 and transferred to Bus 99, just to let you know. Okay, have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. If we could not clap and stuff like that, this isn't a sporting event, we'd appreciate it. Also, all right, is anyone else I'd come up for public comment? Yes, sir. Step forward. You have, state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes on a future agenda item.
My name is Matthew Nadeau. I am in Manatee County, in the Palmasola area. And I just wanted to speak today as a newer resident, moved here in 2021 from Los Angeles. Don't need to give you the rundown of why we chose to move to Bradenton County, or to Manatee County. A big thing that I've really noticed, having two sons that are at IMG, they go to King Middle School, they go to the Manatee High School. We love the area here. I'm blessed to have Mary Lynn as a neighbor, right down the street. And the one thing that I really noticed is that last year, and I've sent several emails out and I've been in touch with the new school superintendent, is about the park on 75th and 9th, because there's that area where the King Middle School courts are, and it looks like there's some redevelopment that is going on there. So, I really wanted to reach out and see what that looks like to potentially get like some community gardens in there, some like fruit trees. I think the one thing that I noticed, despite everything in Los Angeles, is they're very good about communities coming together as far as sustainable systems, growing food, and people coming together and actually knowing each other. If it wasn't for me just kind of going around the neighborhood, I wouldn't really know anybody, except for like when my golden retriever gets lost and then people want to have a conversation because they love dogs and would rather have that talk. So, future agenda thing, would love to see exactly what's going in on that park, what kind of conservation stuff is going in as far as there's an abandoned pond that's there, there's a fence that's kind of falling in. I'm sure you've seen it. It's a tetanus trap. Would love to see exactly what's going on and how we can put in together community gardens, some kind of dog park. There's a lot of dog feces all over the place just because there's no real area there. And what does that look like? And I know that this has something to do with the school too, so I've been talking with the school district as well, but creating awareness for the children as far as the foods that we're putting in our body, what does that look like bringing communities together, especially when we are literally living in the Garden of Eden here? I can spend all day planting in that sandy soil and it's not doing anything, and I get frustrated and throw a watermelon and I got 30 watermelons pop up. So, there is an abundance here, and I think that we are in a great position to have an abundant mindset as far as conservation, as far as getting back to land and actually putting in fruit trees, putting in all these things that are, that are creating a Garden of Eden instead of just looking nice and use a lot of pesticides, fertilizers, and mist-used water. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. All right. Well, anyone else I'd come up for public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll open up for citizens' comments on any consent agenda item.
We still have four people on the board.
We do? Well, I called everybody.
You're number one.
Oh, hang on a second. Let me get to the members, hang on. Sorry about that. Okay. I'm waiting for it to come up. There it is. All right, thank you. What I want to do, address real quickly, Stephanie, thank you for coming in and expressing your opinions. I really appreciate it, and that helped me get a little bit further where I was thinking too. So, I just want to tell you, thank you very much for coming in. And I wanted to comment, if you can get with Lee DiPaolo on this, I think you'd be a great resource for the veteran services over there and helping our team in there to focus on women's veterans. That has probably been an overlooked and neglected section of veterans.
Mr. Chair, Courtney got our information, but I see Andy's in the room now. We'll make sure Andy goes to the next one or two.
Yeah, if you get with Stephanie when we get a chance, I appreciate it. That's all my comments. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz.
Sure. Yeah, we hear this every time we open it up for public comment, and in the spirit of Sunshine Week, which inexplicably, I think, fell off of our proclamation list, I'm going to make a motion to bring back call-in comments as they were previously.
That's what he wants to do.
Is failed for lack of a second.
All right, well, then at the very least, and I talked to the county administrator, since it goes on the same lines of giving, I mean, because we had two motions at the end of our last regular meeting that weren't on the agenda, and people asked me, hey, you know, once again, we went back. We had two motions, one about the In God We Trust and one about the addition to the board, and no one was able to speak on it because nobody was here when the motions were made. And without the call-in comments, anyone watching live couldn't make the motions, and then afterward, no one could even comment on a government level because we shut down all of our social media comments. When I talked to the county administrator, I was told it was a unilateral decision, not by the board, which I believe that to be policy on how the public can speak to us, but made unilaterally by staff, which I think is inappropriate. I think that should be a policy decision. So, I would say those comments need to be turned back on until someone on this board wants to make a motion to turn them off. Otherwise, I don't think that was done properly.
Thank you, sir.
So, that wasn't, that wasn't a motion. I believe it was done improperly, and it should be turned back on until someone wants to make a motion. Otherwise, I do not believe staff in the county administrator has a right to unilaterally turn off comments to allow the public to speak to the government and speak to this board. That's a policy decision. Just if that's not a policy decision, then how's call-in comments? How's three minutes? Board discretion, but social media somehow falls on behalf of the staff.
I'll let that.
No comments? Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sorry, Commissioner Bearden.
Oh, you're good. Just wanted to make sure. Got this on. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking, Stephanie, thank you so much for coming up here, always giving your opinions. We really appreciate it. On the 22-a-day memorial, absolutely. That's definitely going to be a priority, knowing the fact that, you know, I have some, I have a marine on my wall due to that. As far as fighting suicide, right, for veterans, you know, it's one of those subjects where we have to focus as a whole, because what we're doing right now, I don't feel as if it's working, right? Go in the VA, they give you some pills, whatever, it's not working. So, I've actually been on the phone and I've been making some phone calls on essentially how we can create a community of veterans to be able to help counsel other veterans during that process. And I think that if we can come together as a whole, right, and create that particular platform, I don't think necessarily it's coming out of Manatee government, but as a whole, from a nationwide perspective, on how we can tackle this issue, because this is a steady-going issue that, you know, I have gotten those phone calls, and it's been on one of those issues, like how do we go about attacking this issue to where we can reduce those suicides? And honestly, I think it's going to be through a veteran network that, you know, I believe is like one way of doing this. Within the platform that, you know, it's just kind of in having conversations about on how to funnel that veteran that's having issues, on how you can contact, or another veteran can contact that individual, giving them that resource and that platform during certain timeframes of them maybe similar being in during the same time. So, this is a major issue that we must go after as a whole, as a veteran community, and I can tell you that, you know, there are things that are being put in place to focus on reducing those suicides. So, that's, that's kind of like the initiative that we have to take, right? We, us veterans, right? We have to take that initiative. I don't think there's any type of county government or state government or that's going to be able to fix that issue. That's going to take us. So, that's all I have today, but thank you so much for coming up today, Stephanie.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Van Austinbridge.
Thank you, sir. Pat Simmons brought up sidewalks on US 41. It is an FDOT road, so we don't have any authority over US 41. However, at the MPO, and we actually discussed at the Council of Governments a while back, but at the MPO, we've been working with FDOT to get sidewalks on both sides of 41 all the way through, essentially gap filling, because there are gaps where there are not adequate sidewalks on 41, and they're working on that. And actually, I think funds have already been allocated, and it is a project of record. So, that's moving forward. Someone brought up future agenda items that have been brought forward that were not being addressed. I heard three. I didn't start writing down right away, so I may have missed one, but I heard three. One was land clearing, one was advisory boards, and one was Citizens Academy. And actually, in meetings, we've addressed all three of those and have directed staff to bring changes back on all three of those to us. So, all are in the works. Good news there. I think pretty much everyone has addressed Stephanie's comments, the previous speakers have addressed Stephanie's comments, so anything I would say would be redundant. The only thing I would add is that the bus wraps, while they look cool, they are functional. And our role, when it comes to veterans, is to connect veterans with services that are offered from the VA. That's our role, is to connect them with those services, help them apply, help them get the services that they're entitled to. And so, a lot of veterans don't know that we do that, and they don't know how to get. So, the idea is these, they see these buses out there, they see them driving around, and hopefully, people who are entitled to services will call us and we'll be able to connect them with those services. And just generally speaking, I wanted to touch that that was our role. Oh, and the last thing was 9th and 75th Street, the park that's going in there. We have an agreement with the school district for a lease, land lease agreement. The tennis courts that are there are the home courts for Manatee High, so the school board will have first right to use those tennis courts. We're going to add pickleball. We obviously have to put in some parking, do some stormwater work. The existing field that is there is in rough shape, and it's going to be domed, irrigated properly. The well that's on site is still functional, so we'll be tapping into that, and we're going to make a multipurpose athletic field out of that. A community garden was brought up. We're planning a community garden in that same neighborhood down at the end of 75th, down at the end of 9th Avenue, excuse me, at 99th Street. So, there is a community garden planned for that area, just not at that specific site. And we hope to break ground on the park this summer, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Bishop? Yeah, so we're breaking ground on that park for those improvements this summer. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly address community gardens and food forests. So, that is an initiative that we are working really hard to expand in the county right now. If you would like to take a look at the one that we have just completed, it is the Elwood Park Community Garden. It's at 3806 37th Street East. As Commissioner Van Austinbridge said, there is another one planned for out that way in that neighborhood. We also have community gardens in the works for Bennett Park, John Marble Park, as well as hopefully Sylvan Oaks Park in Palmetto. We also have a great food forest that is located at East Bradenton Park, and we're working to expand food forests within all of our, within all of our parks. And I believe that we can use our Tree Trust fund, funding to plant those fruit trees throughout our parks. So, that is something we're actively working to improve on.
Thank you, ma'am. Pictures.
Could Ryan Parnell get his information, because he wants to volunteer, it sounds like, and definitely, we need those champions.
Absolutely, yeah. We, so for all of our community gardens, let me just add that we are looking for champions and leaders, people who want to be a part of that. And so, for each community garden, we really need a citizen or two to take the lead and to say, I want to, I want to take ownership and be a part of this, because the county government can't want it more than the citizens. So, if you live in any of those areas that I listed and would like to be part of a community garden, please get in contact with, with me or Mr. Parnell. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address, sometimes things come up that you can't foresee, but Ms. Pat Simmons comes here relatively often. And so, I just wanted to ask if we could consider beginning to just automatically give her extra time. I think that'd be a reasonable accommodation from.
I don't think I have in the past, so, yeah.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right, seeing that, let me click this thing. Seeing that someone else is on the board, I'd like to ask if there's any citizen comment on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, moved?
Thank you. Went to there. Waiting for them to bring it up. We have a motion by Commissioner Turner and a second by Commissioner Ballard to approve the consent agenda.
I think you got it backwards, but it doesn't.
Okay, that's all right. I wrote it down wrong. Waiting for the motion to come up. Oh, let's do it verbally. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. What I'd do right now is, we normally take a 10:30 break for staff and everyone to take a few minutes, so what I'd like to do, it's 10:40, I'll take a 10-minute break to 10:50. We are in recess. We are in recess.
The choir when I tell you what they are. They were transportation, public safety and law enforcement, and parks and community buildings, near and dear all of them to our hearts. Transportation was sidewalks, intersection, and major roadways. That was 70% of the money. And the staff was so creative about the sidewalks in Rabonia that they were able to nearly double the amount expected to be built by grants, matching monies, figuring out how to use it with the CIP. For public safety and law enforcement, it's equipment, facilities, and improvements, technology across the county structure, and animal services. And the last one is parks and community buildings. That's pools, parks, athletic fields, buildings, playgrounds, boat ramps, environmental preserves, plus libraries, which we see out east nicely, other community facilities. It was very quickly easy to see the taxes potential to make positive change over 15 years. No one expected by the end of the 15 years that we might be successful in raising over a half a billion dollars, remembering that this tax must be revoked again in a near seven years, eight years. So keep that in mind. That's why it matters so much who you put on this team. I must emphatically thank the county staff. The county financial team, from the original John Osborne and Jan Brewer, to the current terrific team of Sheila McLean and Candy Cruz and their team. Candy's the glue for the volunteers who meet on this team. And Sheila is so patient with non-financial community members as we struggle with quarterly reports that go anywhere from 200 to 500 pages. Okay? So it's not one of those lush jobs. Along the way, there was also the helpful Hunter Foxwell, who you sent to the Sheriff's Department, who always wanted to do things just exactly right. They're all spectacular example of the highest quality of a public service team. Not every county gets this kind of quality. I said to Sheila, "I'd like to be in the recruiting business because I'd come right in and grab them all." We owe them thanks for the user-friendly and transparent IST information on our website, and also the stellar tech team that melded IST to GIS, so any county resident can see any project. Okay? And you need to understand that. Every project has the costs, the status, the location, and the end date. And if you haven't had a lesson in how to use the GIS to answer your constituents' questions, it's a 60-second lesson, and you pop right on the thing, and I can say, "No, Harry, that project is started. It's halfway through. We spent half the money." Or, "No, it's not started yet. It's still in design phase." All in this little tiny block, all in one place. Really useful. The first team included a few special people I'd just like to share this honor with. Charles Slater and Craig Copman were two guys who worked really hard with the county to get the tax passed. And you'd have thought they'd have put their feet up and relaxed, but instead, they served on the first committee and helped us get off to a great start. Nora McKennedy, a parish, active, and seasoned volunteer citizen. Tara Dennis, who advocated diligently and endlessly for the Lincoln Park Pool Complex. And Norm Lepino, an ex-county employee who chaired those first three years of meetings and kept us quiet and on a straight track. Thanks to all those mentioned who have made it a pleasure and an honor to spend time in the service of the county. And I thank the commission for your advocacy for community teams. In the long run, the communication is worth any of the effort. Thank you so much to Sheila and her team, and I will miss you guys.
I'll miss you too.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz, you're on the board.
Yeah, Kathy, I hated seeing that you were stepping off this board when I first filed. I think you were one of the very first people I talked to. At the time, it was specific to a bridge going to your neighborhood. But then I quickly realized just what a wealth of information you were as a citizen relative to our taxes and our infrastructure. And you got me hooked on Strong Towns articles and videos, and I still receive them from you. And, you know, thank you for all of your service. Thank you for all of your conversations with me and insights from a public standpoint. And I hope that still continues even while you're off of this board. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Man Austin Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo some of that. Kathleen, the job doesn't pay. And so we really appreciate all the volunteer hours that you've put in. You're a great example of an involved city. We have so many involved citizens, and you're a great example of that. You mentioned Craig Copman and Norm McKennedy and a lot of others from sort of all, you're out in Terra, out east, and she's up in Parish, and Craig's in West Brayden. It's kind of people from all over the county that came together. And I think the IST Committee is one of the most successful committees that the board has put together to advise the board. And, you know, you were such an integral part of that, and we thank you so much for your service to the county.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am, for all that you've done for Manti County, and appreciate the hard work with no pay.
Spend my half a billion dollars well.
All right. Madam CFO?
Yes.
You're up.
Chairman, I also would like to ask for a minute of silence for Mr. Allen Martyr. He started with the Infrastructure Sales Tax Advisory Committee, and suddenly, in January of 2024, he's no longer with us. So I would like to, a minute of silence on his memory.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for bringing that up. All right. Let's get on to some appointments.
Getting down to business, then. Today, we have the appointment of four residents to the Infrastructure Sales Tax Oversight Committee. As per resolution R 18130 that established the Oversight Committee, there is seven members that are part of the committee, and they are, and they take two years and three years in turns. They kind of like lag in their appointments. This time, we have four members. This one is exclusive of Mr. Martyr's position because we felt it was in his honor to wait to bring that one forth. So that will be a fifth one coming soon. The IST Advisory Committee was established to act in oversight capacity to prepare an annual report to the Board of County Commissioners. An annual report that has four components, expenditures that are, we have to explain the four components to this Oversight Committee. Expenditures are consistent with the subcategories and percentages. The expenditures that are consistent with the Infrastructure Sales Tax and Project List, and that any changes to the Infrastructure Sales Tax Project List were made in accordance with the resolution R 18130. Like I said, there are seven committee members actually in the board. Ms. Kathy Woolley, who is not seeking reappointment. Mr. Juan Florenza. Mr. Alan Morell, who is one of the candidates that has reappointed himself. Bruce Stam, likewise. Mr. Martyr, which is the position that we will be filling shortly. Leland Taylor and Jack May. As of today, we have received applications for these upcoming positions that are due. There are Alan Morell, Andre Russo Pegas, Bruce Stam, District 2, 4, and 5. Edward Garcia, District 2. Eric DiSilvestro, District 5. George Nicolopoulos, sorry if I butchered his last name, District Number 5. Richard Hagenbach, District Number 5. And Steven Sadowski. Alan Morell and Bruce Stam are already in the board. They're just up for reappointment. The only requirement of these members is that they all live in the unincorporated area side of Manatee County. That's the requirement. So at this point, I asked that we vote for the, take the nominations and motion to close the nominations and vote for the nominees.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'll go ahead and open nominations for appointments to the Citizens Oversight Committee.
I nominate Bruce Stam.
I'd like to nominate George Nicolopoulos, sir.
I'd like to nominate Andre Russo Pegues.
If we only have three, I think we should nominate Alan Morell because he was recommended to us by Kathy, who's stepping off the board and obviously knows him very well.
And I will nominate Richard Hagenbach.
Okay. So we got Morell, Stam. Yeah, and then we got Alan and Richard. Yeah, Alan and Richard. Okay. I'm going to speak to my nomination along with Kathy's suggestions to keep this kind of a district-type appointments. Andre is a, he's retired, has worked in capital markets, been a banking executive a long time, and has a great resume to be able to sit on this committee. So I would speak in favor of Andre being appointed to the committee. Pegues, P-E-G-U-E-S. Pegues. I think it's French. Maybe. Yes. Okay. We have, we need four, we have five. So I'd like to close, I'd like to recommend we close nominations on Andre. Thank you, sir. We've had motions.
Wait, what?
Do you want them all at the same time?
It's up to you or the chair, but I mean.
Okay, I mean, we can. I mean, if that's what.
You're going seat by seat?
I mean, if we're going to do it, I think if we're going to try to do district by district, I think that's, or do we do seat by seat? I mean.
Whoever's appointed.
Okay, whoever's appointed, okay. All right, so I won't move to close nominations yet, okay? Anybody else like to speak to their nominee?
I picked Bruce in part because we have four people, five people, out of seven leaving this board. We need some consistency. It's a very difficult board that takes a lot of understanding. We only have two people that are staying around with these, with all these new nominations. I think having Alan and Bruce, the two names I mentioned on there, lends some consistency. They're only two-year terms, so I don't think we want to rock the boat quite that much. Bruce is obviously knowledgeable at Manatee County, knowledgeable finance and treasury. So I think both him and Alan, and Alan in large part because of a recommendation made to us, are both important to keep on this board while we add three new members.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sure you want to speak to your nominee? Okay, all right. All right. So we have nominated, we have Morell, Alan Morell, Andre Russo Pegues, Bruce Stam, Richard Hagenbach, and.
George.
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 Nicolopoulos. Okay, I just didn't want to butcher his last name. George Nick, we'll call him that way. All right. We have five, we have five. We need just four. Okay. So anybody want to poll? What's?
I'm not pulling George.
Okay. So do you want to go vote, you want to go? Okay, so we have five. Do you want to go now, do we want to go vote by vote, by person, by person? To obtain, to vote? I mean, that's, I think that's the way we, I mean, since we have five.
Just, I would just name them and say.
Yeah. Well, I need to close nominations first. Okay.
I'll make a motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so all those for Alan.
Well, we have to vote on closing nominations.
Okay, can we vote on closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye. Do verbal vote. Aye. Get through this. All right, so all those for Alan Morell.
Aye.
By verbal vote, I was going to do verbal votes, it's easier. All those in favor of Alan Morell?
Aye.
Aye. Alan is.
Are they opposed?
And are they opposed? Okay. Next would be, and Alan is now appointed. For Andre Russo Pegues, can I have a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Andre is now on the board, on Oversight Committee. Now, going to Bruce Stam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie. So now, let's go ahead and, now we just vote on the other two on George Nicolopoulos, Nicolopoulos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 What's the pronunciation?
Nicolopoulos.
Nicolopoulos. Is that you?
Yeah, it's a.
Nick, why don't you? George, George, hey, George. Thank you, sir, for correcting us. I appreciate it. Sorry to butcher your name.
We're volunteering for free labor, sir.
Yeah. So.
Aye for George.
Was there any opposed on George? No? George, you've been appointed. Thank you very much. And then on Richard Hagenbach, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And Richard has been appointed.
Mr. Chairman, we need to open public comment.
Yes, I'm going to. What I'd like to do is call any public comment, that would like to come down and speak to any of the appointees that have been appointed to the Oversight Committee. Seeing now a closed public comment, thank you all very much for wanting to be a part of this board and the Oversight Committee. Thank you, George, for being here today. Appreciate that. And now we'll move forward to, the next big item is going to be property management reports on the Emerson Point Preserve land acquisition update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me.
Yes, sir.
Charles is walking up. I'll give you an update, and you can ask any specific questions of Charles. So I appreciate the board's giving us direction to work with the seller and the seller's attorney to get best and lowest sell price. We did that in conjunction. We went back to our appraiser for an updated appraisal based on new comps that we felt should have been included in the original appraisal. To remind the board, the lowest best that I could get with the seller was 15.5. The initial appraisal was roughly 12.7. I'm rounding up. The new appraisal came in at $14,632,500, a difference of $867,500.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Metter, you have anything to comment more?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. Kind of stole my thunder there, but thank you for the update, Charlie. This is a result of the last board meeting. It was a five-to-two vote to bring back the update on the Emerson Point Preserve. And so here I am with the update, thanks to the County Administrator. We did get it, we did get it. Yeah, sure. No problem. Is that better?
He's one of those aloof talkers.
There you go. No problem. So we did get, as Charlie, as the County Administrator mentioned, we did get an updated appraisal from Compass Real Estate. It does include the Crooked River Ranch Preserve that was recently closed on as a comparable sale, as that was an arm-linked transaction. And so now the updated value, as the County Administrator alluded to, is $14,632,500. And as far as negotiations, I believe that the lowest offer that they're willing to accept was 15.5 million.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Van Austin Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this has been a much anticipated piece. I would say, from the creation of LMAC, this was always sort of a legacy piece that was on our radar going forward. The negotiations have been long and arduous. I would, I think we should give a lot of credit to our administrator and to Mr. Metter as well. We started out millions and millions of dollars apart. The first appraisal came in at 12, well, the same appraisal came in at 12-something. We had another appraisal that came in at 11.8. We felt that those appraisals could be reevaluated. I don't want to say they were wrong by any means, but we felt they're, appraising is an art, and there are different ways to look at property sometimes. We, as Commissioners, of course, have to be good stewards of tax dollars. We don't want to set a precedent of, you know, here comes the government with the big check, and they're going to overpay drastically for our property. We can ask for anything they want because they have to buy it because there's political pressure. We weren't going to cave to that. We were going to set a price and be good stewards of those tax dollars and ensure that we paid a fair price. The issue is if we set that precedent and we start drastically overpaying for property, we're dealing with a fixed pool of money on this. And so if you overpay by $5 million three times, you're going to end up $15 million short of the end, and there's going to likely end up property that you're not able to purchase, and you're preserving less because you overspent along the way. That's really the precedent, I think, that we've been trying to avoid. And I do also want to be clear that, to the board, while I think this is a good buy, and I support this, and I supported it at the last meeting, we don't have a letter of commitment from the state. We do not have that. We do not have a letter of commitment in any way, shape, or form from the state. There is a process that the state has to go through in order to reimburse in these situations. And there is a vote that has to be held, and it has not been presented to that board. There has been no vote held. So we still run that risk. But even with that, you know, knowing that that risk exists, I still think that this is a good buy for this board. And I still think that what we've done up to this point to reach this agreement, again, Charles and Charlie did a great job talking to the appraiser, presenting new information to the appraiser, and getting them to bring us an updated appraisal. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the County Administrator to move forward with the purchase of this property for 15.5 million.
A second. Okay. A bunch of seconds. Okay. We have a motion on the board by Commissioner Man Austin Bridge to purchase the Emerson Point property and direct County Administrator to move forward with purchasing Emerson Point property. And we had a second by Commissioner Turner on the motion. Do we still, do I need to, well, I got two Commissioners on the board. What's the, I mean, call, I mean.
Suggest you take public comment now on it.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll just take, let the Commissioner speak, and then I'll take public comment.
Okay. I only put myself on, I only put myself on the board in case there was a different level of dialogue. There's a motion on the floor. I fully support this, and I'm glad we were able to move this forward in expedited manner.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this, you know, assuming it's going to pass, which I think this is going to be a great addition, and it just serves us, just an outline or highlight on our commitment to preserving what we can. It's that Teddy Roosevelt, Republican, you know, conserve the land that we can and allow the free markets to create prosperity in our communities. So I love to see those two things go in hand in hand. So I'm excited about this. And of course, there's other projects in the future that I'm excited about, that we've seen, you know, the Mixons and the Gamble Creek and some of those things. But this one, we need to move on it, it seems to me, or at least I'm ready to vote today to move on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm full supportive of this. I think it's a great piece of property that we need, definitely need to add to our inventory of preservation on lands, and I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I am also in full support of moving forward and purchasing the land. I think this is going to be a great addition to our environmentally sensitive lands that we already have, and I look forward to this being a part of, the remaining part of Emerson to complete that whole, to complete the whole part, the whole parcel. So I appreciate everyone's comments. What I'd like to do, Mr. Metter, I'd like to call for public comment. Oh, sorry. I know, I just saw her. She just jumped on. She did a satcher on me.
Sorry about that. So I also just want to echo some of the comments that were made. I do thank our County Administrator and Mr. Metter for working so hard to get these numbers a little closer together. And this, I think everyone, all of the Commissioners have been clear from the start that this was an important piece of property that we wanted to preserve, and I'm really excited to support the purchase of the Emerson Point Preserve expansion.
Thank you, ma'am. County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to overstep, but could I just have Madam Clerk read the motion back?
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Motion made by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, seconded by Commissioner Turner, to direct the County Administrator to move forward with the purchase of the property for 15.5 million.
Okay. And my suggestion, if I could, Mr. Chair, is just that that contract come back to the County Attorney's Office for legal review, for presentation to the board. So I don't certainly want to overstep my bounds with Commissioner Van Austin Bridge's motion, but I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
And, Mr. Chair, I would add that there are also certain caveats to that contract, that unfortunately, we don't really have a, if we're going to get the property, we're going to have to agree to, in my opinion. They're not budging on it, and that's the carve-out, the four-acre carve-out on the bay, four homes. While we are obviously trying to protect, you know, preserve the land from development, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, in my opinion. So as the County Administrator moves forward, he's aware that that carve-out is going to have to be part of the purchase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Attorney, do you want me to adjust that motion?
Yes, sir, Mr.
If you would do that for me, that would be great.
And the seconders, okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Recommendation is for, motion for county staff to negotiate a contract with the owner, submit to the County Attorney's Office for legal review, and then bring back to the board for its consideration, Mr. Chairman.
You left out the number of 15.5.
For 15.5 million.
Yeah, so moved.
All right. All right, thank you very much. We have an amended motion, and if the motioner approved it, and then we had the second by the secondor. All right, now all we'll do is we'll open it up for public comment. I have one speaker, Diana Shoemaker, on the board. Diana, would you like to come forward? If you could please state your name, county residence, and that you have three minutes.
Diana Shoemaker. I'm a resident of Manti County. Four years ago, the citizens of Manti County let this commission know that they were, where they stood on preserving land. The referendum specifically approved by 72% of Manti County voters sanctioned the use of additional tax dollars to finance the acquisition, improvement, and management of land to protect drinking water, preserve fish and wildlife, habitat, and to prevent stormwater runoff pollution, and provide parks. Purchasing the 97 acres adjacent to Emerson Point Preserve is a win for the entire county. And while we certainly want to be good stewards of tax dollars, the concerns that have been raised by the commission continue to stall the final actions needed to move this forward. I'm encouraged by the conversation today. Thank you. There is a state commitment and money for this property. Your residents understood and understand that sometimes there is a price to pay in doing business, and that paying above appraised value, in this case, is the best decision to serve the greatest good. The long-term benefits from this decision will be priceless. Finally, the seller's request for four acres will not infringe and is congruent with requests by previous landowners negotiating with the county. Your residents have overwhelmingly spoken up in favor of preserving our precious national resources. They have told the commission that they want to maintain the natural environment of this county because they know that without preserved lands, we will not have clean water, our tourist economy will suffer, and the overall quality of life will be impacted. Any additional cost to purchasing this property above appraised value will be insignificant to the financial losses we will suffer if we do not purchase this land. I urge the board to move forward with this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come up for public comment? A lot of folks out there. Please state your name and your county residence, and you have three minutes, Mrs. Lawler.
Okay. Before I start, Mr. Bishop, when you speak, could you speak into the microphone because a lot of us have a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, apologize. Thank you.
I appreciate it. My name is Ruth Lawler. I'm a resident of Manatee County for over 60 years. Emerson Point Preserve, I'm glad to hear that you are leaning towards going it, but you're putting some cravats in on it. As a Manatee County citizen, I'm one of nearly 72% of the voters countywide who voted in 2024 environmentally significant lands amendment that increases our own taxes to purchase and preserve sensitive environmental lands. We are grateful that you use these funds to recently approve the purchase of Crooked River Ranch on the north bank of Manatee River. That purchase was at a cost of $164,705 per acre and included a carve-out of land to be retained by the sellers. So you've set the precedence to do that. The proposed Emerson Point Preserve addition also has a small four-acre carve-out that the sellers wish to retain in the far northeast corner of the 97-acre parcel. The appraised value, the previous appraised value, comes in at $113,265 per acre, quite a bit less. Fortunately, the state of Florida will reimburse the appraisal amount to Manatee County, so the only amount the citizens approve tax dollars, our tax dollars will pay for, is the difference between the appraisal and the purchase price. Mr. Van Austin Bridge, Mr. Satcher, are you listening or talking to each other? You were talking to each other and not listening to public comments. Okay. So fortunately, this, yeah, that was not the case for Crooked River Ranch, which was was all local tax dollars were used to purchase. You had no problem approving that purchase. Sneed Island is in District Three. In 2020, Commissioner Van Austin Bridge got 58.7% of the vote. The 2020 amendment for the environmental lands that we voted on got 74.4% of the vote. Obviously, that vote was much more popular than Mr. Van Austin Bridge. More citizens in District Three wanted environmental lands preserved than they wanted Mr. Van Austin Bridge to be in office. Did you realize that there is posted on Manatee County website for this item, for this agenda item, 198 pages of citizens' comments, all of which were in favor of the Emerson Point addition purchased by Manatee County? Did any of you read those 198 pages of comments? I did. I read every one of them, and every one of them was in favor of this purchase, the way it was presented, including the four acre carve out. People stated that, and residents of Sneed Island stated that. They want this purchase. Don't play games with, oh, but that carve out can't be there. Don't use those games. We want that purchase. Thank you.
Then there's a motion to approve it. All right, is there any other, yes, ma'am, can you state your name and county residence, and you have three minutes?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Samantha Wassmer, and I'm a Manatee County resident. It was mentioned that we don't have approval or commitment from the state. I have good news, I have a letter dated February 16th, 2024, from the Director, Callie DeHaven, of Division of State Lands from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, to Deborah Waith, of Environmental Lands Division Manager, Natural Resources Department of Manatee County. And it reads, Dear Mrs. Waith, I want to take the opportunity to inform you that the Division of State Lands supports Manatee County's efforts in acquiring the 98 acre Emerson Point Preserve addition property, subject property, located within the Terracilla Florida Forever Project boundary. DSL is willing to purchase the subject property from the county at no more than the DSL approved appraised value subject to available funding and approval by the governor and cabinet, as well as all applicable Florida statutes and rules that govern DSL's acquisition process. The county may want to consider using DSL-approved vendors for due diligence products it obtains for the transaction to avoid duplication of acquisition costs. The Terracilla project is significant for the protection it offers on some of the last natural lands left on the southeast shore of Tampa Bay. With approximately 2,000 feet of mangrove fringe along the Terracilla Bay Aquatic Preserve, acquisition of the subject property is important for estuering water quality, coastal habitat resilience, and protection of the wildlife species known to live in the immediately surrounding area. Thank you for the support of the Florida Forever Program and helping the state protect Florida's natural resources for future generations. We are most appreciative of the county's efforts and look forward to working with the county upon its acquisition of the subject property. We've also spoken with employees of the DSL who have said that this is basically their commitment. This is their commitment to pay back. So I encourage you guys to please move forward with it. It's a great choice, so please, please, please do it.
I mean, I'm starting to have public comment going on. Yes, sir. State your name, county of address, and you have three minutes.
County, county, right, not address.
County of residence.
Yeah. My name is Bryce Claypool. I live in Manatee County, and I'm 16 years old. I run the club, Florida Kids for Clean Water. When I was younger, I took classes with Manatee County at Emerson Preserve. I loved them. I made friends, and I learned so much about nature. We looked for microorganisms in mosses, we dip netted in sea grass, and we experimented with water sampling. One of the things that I took away from this experience was the importance of protecting natural lands, and how magical it is that we have these beautiful wild tracts of land in our community. Today, you have the opportunity to save an amazing property, along with a mandate from your constituents to do so. We've made it clear that this property is exactly the sort of thing that we wanted to use the land referendum for. It's a beautiful area that will provide wildlife habitat, water quality benefits, and recreational opportunities. When I campaigned for the passing of the land referendum, it was experiences like those I had at Emerson that drove me. Nature is invaluable, you can't put a price on it. You can't put a price on all the wonderful days I spent at Emerson Preserve, or the lives of all the animals that live there, or the health of the bay and the future of our environment. I urge you to pursue this opportunity to preserve this precious natural area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir. State your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Mason Gravely, District Two, Manatee County, originally from Polk County. I recently asked my son, he's turning five, I said, what do you wanna do for your birthday? And I thought about it for a second, and then he said, Dad, I wanna go hiking in Emerson Point with you. And my first thought was, wow, you really left a lot of money on the table, because I was willing to do a lot more than that. And then I immediately thought, well, you know, why do you wanna do that? And he said, I love that place. And so we go every week. We live right down the road, right on the county, kind of line of District Two and Three. And he's had a lot of firsts out there. First time catching a fish, first time paddle boarding, kayaking, seeing manatees, dolphins, all of those firsts have been there. So I was very excited when I heard that we had the opportunity to expand this property by, what, 30, 40%? And, you know, I didn't tell him much, because I didn't know if it was gonna happen, but it got me excited, because what I noticed when I'm out there with him, it's packed with other families, too. So I know I'm not the only parent experiencing these memories with their kids every weekend. It's literally thousands of others. Sometimes it's very crowded. So when I saw this was gonna be an expansion by this amount, I got very excited. It's gonna help alleviate some of that stress on the trails, on the paddling trails, on the fishing spots. But when I saw that there was some pushback, I just wanted to give my words and say, one, thank you, thank you for changing your mind, thank you for the change of heart. I don't think anything is all that remarkable, all that unique, or all that memorable about having another semi-exclusive community on the water, but to see this expansion, I think it is very remarkable. I thank the people, every time we go out to Emerson Point, whoever they are, all the countless names along the way who have been a part of making that place possible, I know I'm very thankful, and I know that people will be thanking you in the future for helping make this place even more expansive, for more opportunities for memories and experiences like this for generations to come. So I really appreciate it, and there's gonna be a lot of people that come down the line that don't know your names, but are gonna be very appreciative for the times they caught a fish, for the times they saw a dolphin, saw a paddleboard. And it would be a great place for the, for the homeowners who had the opportunity to live there, but there's so many of us that don't have those means, don't have those opportunities. So if I was a man of means, I would help you meet that difference happily, seeing the smiles that's put on my two sons' faces. But I'm not a man of those means, and I don't have those decisions to make. You do. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Thank you. All right. Any more? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Belinda Sparkman Strickland. I just turned over 76 about a week ago, and I was raised on 15th Street, just a couple of blocks from here. And I'll have you know, in the DeSoto Parade, they used to have a twin section in the DeSoto Parade years ago. That's how many twins we had in the area. I am so pleased now to know that today you all have decided to carry on for Manatee County from all those years, the people that have loved the county, all the land. Thank you for your decision, and I do hope you continue to move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that you were in the parade as a twin.
And Bobby Playlike pushed a stroller.
I thought it was more like Kyle Grimes maybe pushed a stroller.
Commissioners, my name is David Woodhouse, I'm a resident of Manatee County. I'm a frequent visitor to Sneed Island, which, as you know, includes the Emerson Point Preserve. It, Sneed Island is on the National Register of Historical Places, which includes the Emerson Point. It's also on the 30 Years Florida Forever Park Project. The question I have, and I've done some research, and I hope you can correct me if I'm wrong The purchase of this plot of land does not preclude the fact that a number of houses can be built. That was based on my research. Can you correct me if I'm wrong, that there's still a provision in there to allow building of houses on this parcel?
Yes, sir. We don't dialogue back and forth, but the county attorneys advise us what's happening there, so if anyone wants to answer that question after we're done. But county attorney, we don't have a contract yet.
Is there still an allowance for building houses there?
We don't, we don't dialogue back and forth, but we will make sure we get your question answered.
All right, well, thank you very much. By the way, for the members of the audience I didn't mention, the Sneed Island includes the Port Event mound site, it's where Native Americans were buried dating back to 900, the year 900 through 1725. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to come forward for public comment? You know the rules.
Yeah, hi, Abby Turner, Executive Director and Waterkeeper for Suncoast Waterkeeper of Sarasota, Manatee Counties. I live in Sarasota County. I'm just here to say thank you so much for moving this deal forward for the sec, or the third appraisal that seems to have come back closer to the asking price. That is really great that we can now move forward with this piece of property that is extremely beneficial to the community and beyond. I've heard from people as far away as Orlando saying thank you for what we're doing as trying to get out the word and get people to support this purchase. So people from all over tend to visit this area because of the natural resources that are here, and thank you for continuing to protect those natural resources. And we'll see you at the next meeting when you actually get to say, yes, we're gonna purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment, or? Yes, ma'am, here's your, here's your time, ma'am.
Here's my time, thank you. You tried to not guarantee it, but you almost showed your hand, and I appreciate that. This shouldn't have been this hard. I'm not representing Manatee Fishing Game. Mary Lynn Parker, Mary Lynn Parker, I'm sorry.
And the other, Manatee County, correct?
I'm a Manatee County resident.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And Manatee Fishing Game gave each of the LMAC members a copy of the Conservation Program Handbook, which is the only signature treatise on how to run a really good conservation program. So I just wanna thank you for fulfilling much of what this requires to have a good conservation program, and it's important that we not let it go off the rails. So a couple of things, in terms of what I understand from the concept plan that's posted on the dashboard for LMAC, is that the carve out is in the northeast corner along Amberwind subdivision. So the idea that a driveway would come through the park in any demonstrable way, or homes would be taking up a portion of the shoreline, seems moot if that's in case, if the concept map is accurate. I want you also to remember, as Ruth said, she's been here 70 years, my family moved here 75 years ago. Over these last, the years of my life here, citizens have taken the initiative to purchase all kinds of conservation lands, including the county addition to DeSoto National Memorial. There was a group of citizens got together, came to the county, said, we wanna figure out how to buy that. The same thing with the original Emerson Point. In my Fishing Game files, there's a letter from Bob Christopher thanking Fishing Game for supporting the citizens for Emerson Point. Duette property was purchased from the mining company so that we could protect our water source, and that was citizen-initiated driven, as is the referendum that was passed. And I appreciate, as a Republican, wanting to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. However, over 70% of our citizens said, yes, tax me. Now, back in '22, those who sat here said, well, we're not going to assess the tax when we can, because who in the world would ever wanna tax themselves? Well, 70% do, and we appreciate you now spending the money for what it was intended for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I got some bad news for you, though. The book you just presented, you have to give it to the clerk.
Oh, sure.
Part of the record. If you, if you want a bag, that's between you and the clerk.
She can make a copy of it, Mr. Chairman. Return it to the citizens.
Yes, ma'am, you can have the book back after the clerk gets done with it. Thank you. See, is there any other public comments? Seeing there's no other public, oh, Mr. Chenis, yes, sir.
Let me make this short and sweet. My name is Rusty Chenis. I am a 40-plus-year taxpayer, voting and boating resident of Manatee County. After over 40 years on the local waters, it was only after reading Jack Davis's Pulitzer Prize-winning book, Gulf, The Making of an American Sea, that I really realized what we had lost in this area. And also, as being a founder of and a member of the Sister Keys Conservancy that preserves the Sister Keys off the north end of Longboat Key, that I realized, over 16 years, how an ecosystem can recover if just given the chance. So I, you have the chance, I'm having to revise this a little bit, because you have voted to go move forward this, and I commend you for that. Thank you very much. This will be something that you will look back at and be very proud of, I guarantee you. And I just wanted to remind you, as other people have here today, that 70, over 70% of the Manatee County residents voted to tax themselves to preserve what we have today and what we want to increase. Our legacy will be defined what we choose, by what we choose to preserve, and also by what we squander. And I encourage everyone listening today, and I was really pleased to hear that we have made April Water Conservation Month. Obviously, it's very important, and that's sort of the whole gist of why I'm up here today. But I just wanted to remind everyone here that it's in all of our self-interest to not vote Republican, not vote Democrat, but vote water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chenis, you gotta give that to the clerk also.
Okay.
Your vote, your voting thing, your poster. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, you know the, you know the, you know the rules.
Thank you. First off, thank you very much. You made a very wise decision today. I was very hesitant to vote for this tax a few years ago.
Carol, I don't know if your mic's working or not.
Anyway, we're back again. I could use that.
There you are. You're back, thank you.
Anyway, I want to thank you very much for a very, very, very wise decision. I was very hesitant to vote for this tax a few years ago, because what was being proposed, always the devil is in the details. And that's why it was very important for me to work with the LMAC Committee that I've been on for three and a half years now. And we just had our first purchase with the Crooked Creek Ranch, and this is the kind of purchase that I think the public wanted those tax dollars to go, go for. I wasn't a great proponent of it, because I'm probably never gonna vote to tax myself for anything and give you my money until I know exactly what we're buying. And this was a good decision. You scared us a little bit, Chairman Ron, when we all came down here and we wrote 100 letters for our public comment urging the purchase of this property, and we were a little worried there that we wouldn't get a chance to tell you how we felt about it. And it is got to be a good feeling for us to be able to come up here and say thank you. And I hope that all of you remember how that feels to do the right thing, because we do need to start doing a little bit more of the right thing, and remember how that feels when you've done something that the public has asked you to do. And it's a much better feeling than expecting us to come up here and yell at y'all, because we don't really wanna do that either. We would much rather say thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
And we appreciate this, and let's get her done.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else before we close public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, public servants, and public. Hi, Bill Webster, I live in Manatee County, and I served for a long time on LMAC, so this gives me tremendous pleasure, and thank you for listening to LMAC and supporting them. them. This is a brilliant move. The population explosion north of the river will benefit, well, I'll say that the population explosion needs this infrastructure, if you want to call it that. And the population is going to need more green areas, and so this is perfect. This is something that is all in Zone A. We don't benefit by having other uses for it. So the water, storm protection, everything's great. So I don't want to repeat any other things. Only I'll close with, please don't allow the four acres reaching for the perfect to derail the almost-perfect. So thanks again, and job well done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. With that, seeing no one else wanting to come forward, I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion that's been made by Commissioner Van Austinbridge, seconded by Commissioner Turner. However, I have three commissioners on the board, and Commissioner Turner, you're up.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to state, this is not a change of heart. You know, we've always wanted to purchase this piece of property. I think Commissioner Van Austinbridge described the front side of it as, "We don't want to set a precedent." And so you guys understand what that means, is every time we go to negotiate a deal if we're overpaying, that's going to come up. Well, you overpaid on this one. That will be a response when we're trying to negotiate a deal. Secondly, let's talk about the carve-out. The last gentleman that came up, if that is a non-negotiable piece of the deal, would you want us to move forward or dig in our heels? I mean, but this, this is... What?
No public comment. Please.
What's that?
We don't need the public comment. It's rhetorical question.
Well, in a conversation, you can have rhetorical question, too. Yeah. So the carve-out on Crooked River, since that was brought up as an example, is a carve-out for the family that had that for four generations. The carve-out for this one is for some development. So you guys understand, look at, look at what we've achieved here. It wasn't that we didn't want to do the deal. Somehow, you don't understand the negotiation process, and while we weren't trying to push back to try and, hey, man, hey, you wanted the respect, you wanted the respect up here, and then you're doing the same.
Right. Right. Just keep going.
All right. So what I'd like to just explain is, we were all, we're always wanting to achieve this. And maybe we need to do a better job of communicating, but we can't communicate the integral details of a negotiation. Led by our county administrator, they've done a skillful job of pushing back some and getting us some better terms. By going back to the appraisal, that also gives us the benefit of perhaps raising the participation from the state. I'm sure you guys understand that piece. So it's, you know, it's back and forth, it is a negotiation. By no means are we trying to stall things. If you look at our history here on the board, we try to keep things moving, right? We try to keep things moving quickly. But if there's things that we, that need negotiating, you've got to give us the opportunity to try and do so. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Van Austinbridge.
Thank you, sir. I just speak briefly to the carve-out. We want it in that northeast corner, and we want the road to run along the side of an existing development, not through the middle. But until the contract is finalized, we don't know exactly where it's going to be. Of course, we're going to try to keep it isolated in that corner and try to keep the road isolated over there as well, and we're hopeful that that's how it'll end up. But again, no guarantee. And along with the subject of no guarantees, what we have is an email from the state, is an email from staff, saying that they want it, which is great, and is certainly a great step in the right direction, but it's not a guarantee. It's certainly, an email from staff is certainly not a vote of the cabinet, and it's not a signature of the governor either. That said, obviously, we have the greatest governor in America, right? And we're very confident in that he is going to come through for us. He's put a great cabinet together. He's been wonderful just to Florida and to this county. And so we're pretty confident that in the end, we will get reimbursed, but it's not a guarantee, and we do have to go into it knowing that nothing is for certain until it's, until you have the check in your hand, it's not a certainty. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited about this vote. I do want to point out, moving forward, perhaps we could at least understand one thing. That is that the money that's coming into this, it was voted on by the citizens for sure, but it's finite. That's the amount. So each time we overpay, it changes what we can do in the future. So even if we all in this entire room share the exact same goal, which is to set aside great conservation land, let's assume we all share that goal in the future, which, there are lawyers in the room, okay? And they hear everything, every, every attorney in the town hears everything we say up here. So I probably shouldn't have said anything. But putting pressure to pay well over appraised value, which is not what we're doing in this situation, so this is great news. This is great news. This is just wins all the way around. So I appreciate what everyone said when they stood up and talked about what a great job this was, and kudos to Charlie Bishop and his team and the commission here. But I just want to point out that if you spend $5 million on a piece of land, or $10 million, or $50 million, that's $50 million that you didn't spend somewhere else. So if we all share the same goal, perhaps we should look at things a little bit like a business negotiation, even from some of your perspectives that are here in the audience. But regardless, I appreciate you being here, and I think we're really on the same side on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Van Austinbridge, seconded by Commissioner Turner, the motion to direct the county administrator and staff to move forward with the purchase of Emerson Point Preserve for $15.5 million, and for the contract to be reviewed by the county attorney and brought back to the board. Please cast your votes now. And the motion carries seven to zero. So we're on the track. There we go. So we'll get, we'll be back in front of the board as soon as the county administrator and the county attorney get with the sellers. So thank you very much for being here today, and thank you for your comments. Moving on, there's, I see no other commissioner items. County attorney, any kind of comments?
No, thank you.
County administrator, you got...
No, sir.
Hey, can y'all, could everybody please just be a little quieter, because we're still in the middle of our meeting? Thank you. Thank... Hey, Leslie. Like, could you guys take, I go outside, we're still in the middle of our meeting. Everybody could please be quiet, please, as you exit. You can be out there in the foyer and have all the conversation you want. All right. County administrator, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
All right. Are there any, are there any commissioner comments on anything you'd like to bring up or anything like that?
Just out of curiosity, are we not having a conversation about the ADUs that we told people were going to, was going to be on the agenda but wasn't on the agenda?
Yeah.
I mean, no one's here to talk about it, but we originally told people they weren't allowed to do future agenda comments on the ADUs because it was part of this agenda, it just wasn't listed as part of the agenda. I wasn't sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Satcher? All right, thank you. If no other commissioner comments, we will adjourn for the day. Thank you.
So my name is Ray Turner. I'm the commissioner for District 5, and I'm pleased to be your emcee today, out in this beautiful nature and being able to enjoy it. We are so blessed to be here today amid this natural beauty to celebrate the preservation of Crooked River Ranch, named after the crooked nature of the river. That's topography, not any other kind of crooked nature. Crooked River Ranch, once upon a time, had crops growing and cattle grazing. Actually, I think, didn't you say, Charlie, there's some cattle grazing today? There still is. Okay. So we... Longhorn. There's still evidence. The closing on this property marks the beginning of Manatee County's privilege of ownership and stewardship of this amazing piece of property. We are looking forward to all the opportunity that it will offer Manatee residents, and we're really thankful to the family and trust that made this possible for us. We want to begin today like we do all meetings, everything that we do in Manatee County, and that is to honor God and honor our great nation. And for the invocation, newly inducted into the Commissioner Beards Club is Commissioner Jason Bearden. He's wearing, he's wearing the beard good, though, right? Sir?
Trying to be more like Commissioner Ray Turner over here. Today is an amazing day. You know, the Lord has blessed us with an amazing, beautiful piece of land today. So it's just an honor to be out here and to be able to acquire this for the taxpayers. Father, thank you, Lord, for what you've done today. We give you glory and honor again and again, and we're just so grateful and thankful for what you've given us here today. So we lift this up to you, Lord, and we thank you for it. And I ask you to bless all these people here today, and we just thank you for what you're doing here in Manatee County, in Jesus's name. Amen.
And here with the pledge from Manatee County Natural Resources Department, Resource Management Division, is North County Superintendent Michelle Dur. Michelle?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
As we continue this afternoon, we want to highlight what makes the conservation in this land so unique. For example, this is the first purchase using the 2020 Conservation and Parks Project's referendum funds. That is money that voters of Manatee County have asked us to put forward for this type of acquisition. Let's bring up my colleague from the Board of County Commissioners, James Satcher, who represents District 1 and one of the best beards in the county, to share what he feels is going to be important to the constituents. You handsome devil, coming up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. He's a, he probably wants a vote coming, coming up, I'm sure.